Okay, we've had two changes. I suggest we vote on each one separately.
Ah, is that Robert's rules stuff?
I don't know. One of the problems we have is this is supposed to be a very short meeting. We have two other meetings this morning. I added this, um, the leasing policy simply to make a motion. And that does not require a lot of discussion. Eight F, I think, is a major issue and should have enough time so we can really discuss it.
Well, I'm assuming that you can tell us exactly what your intent was, Mr. Moldau.
Right, it was just to provide information on what is happening. I could say it right now, but I handed out sheets to you people, um, which indicates why we should bring this information ultimately into consideration.
Okay, uh, we're not going to make a decision as board, obviously.
We're not going to make decisions, no. But, uh, I think it's important that the information be exchanged.
So you're just, you're bringing forth some information that you would like
That's correct.
The board members to hear.
Yep.
Okay, um, does that satisfy you, Mr. Baum?
Okay.
All right. Moving on, do I, we have a vote, so the approval agenda's been, been made. Do we have, do we have any media in the room? Okay, report of the chair, number, item number four. Uh, I do not have anything to, to talk about at this time. So, um, if we're going to have an open forum, if anybody'd like to talk before the board at this moment, it'd be the, be the time to do it. You have three minutes to do it, uh, to make your comments. And, uh, if not, um, there's no one that wants to make comments, then we'll call that item closed and we'll move, uh, Marty, you're out there. Do you want to come up and make a, make some comments?
It's quite disturbing. I'm not sure if this is the right meeting to do this, but last night was the first time I got to read the notice at the end of the year. And I was quite taken aback by the fact that...
There were reasons for what they did. Now, the request to reconsider the whole GRF meeting's effect on the third mutual must, must be met in depth before we speak, meaning third mutual to GRF. Uh, I spoke with Brad yesterday for a good thirty minutes, uh, on the subject, and it seems to be predicated largely upon, uh, the terms in the trust that allow such a thing to be done. Years ago, and I mean it's quite a few years, we tried, when it became the fiftieth anniversary of this community, the discussion came up about amending or dropping the trust and was voted down as it was too complicated to change, to review the entire trust and maintain it. And it was absurd to throw out the trust as such, so we remain with it. So the basis for being able to put a class of, a new class of, uh, member, uh, we took it on ourselves at that time to just leave alone the, the membership of the lessees and just go ahead, even though it was in violation of that particular part of the trust. So I just want to encourage you to please get your ducks in a row so that when November third comes along and we now have a new GRF board, that we can, I'm not saying throw everything out, but it needs to be amended to our way of life. What is good for the resident is what we should be first concerned with. Not just member resident, owner resident, so forth, but when you're a resident, you're a resident. And I think that, I think we got the talent and the capability in this committee, um, sorry, this board, to truly represent, uh, both sides of the story. Some may be good, not bad. I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but I want you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
You gonna respond?
Do, um, there's consent calendar. Yes, um, responses to the, to the speakers' forum. Bert?
Yeah, Marty, the, this bothers me too. Currently, that trust does specify, okay, that the facilities are only for the use of members.
By definition.
By definition, that's correct. So, you know, there's a dilemma here. You're right, we have to do something to the trust, which is not a simple thing to do. Okay? And, you know, we have this conflict between our governing documents and the trust for that reason. This is not unusual. I mean, we have conflicts in our documents today because we have the trust, we have the CCNRs, we have the bylaws, and these have all been addressed separately. And nobody really has ever gone back and looked at each of these documents to see whether or not they are in conformance with each other. And this is something that we are planning to do with this board, so...
But this is now not the future. We gotta decide something.
We can, we can change our documents. We cannot change the trust without all mutials plus GRF, okay, approving. So they all have to be involved. It's, it's a total effort of the community. It's not going to be easy. The last time we tried to do something like this, wound up with a lawsuit. So have, we're gonna try. That's all we can say.
Uh, any other comments from anyone? If not...
Thank you, Marty. And Bert? Uh, now to item number seven.
I forget, uh, thank you. Item number seven, consent calendar. Uh, all matters listed on the consent calendar are recommended for action by committees and will be enacted by the board by one motion. In the event that an item is removed from the consent calendar by members of the board, such items shall be subject to further discussion and action by the board. Do I have a motion, the consent, for the consent calendar?
I second.
You second. Do I have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? If not, take a vote. Uh, we'll do this by hand. I think it's, it's, some people aren't logged in. Are you all, are you all?
I'm not.
Are you all electronically?
Just do what you want.
Okay, let's all do it by hand.
I'm not sure what we're voting.
We're voting on the replace existing patio enclosure with room extension for manor five, four, seven, eight, A. Sorry, John, I should've read that. All those in favor? Okay, I, I've got, I've got seven votes. I'm not voting.
John, I need a vote because I'm looking for something in three minutes to show me what you're all about. And they're tough.
Seven, eight, uh, three, two.
I want to see a picture of the manor. I want to see this.
That, John, that, that all took care during, in the Architectural Standards and Control Committee.
All right.
All right. So did you vote? Do you want to vote? Did you want to vote? So we had seven, four. Uh, I didn't vote, and we had, uh, that's all the voting we had on that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Bill. Three of us went to the wrong room, so that only goes to show you. But now we're here.
Yes. Now that, it says Friday, October twentieth, Laguna Woods Village Center, Board Room.
That's okay, forget it.
Also on TV.
Oh, and we're on TV, oh well.
Right, yes. So, we gotta, don't wash your dirty laundry out here, folks. Okay, no, okay. Uh, item number eight, unfinished business. Um, I'm going to turn this over to you, Mr. Baum.
Okay. Um, we, I already read these resolutions at our last board meeting, and, uh, a motion was made on these. So now it's open for discussion and for final vote, but just to keep everybody abreast, I'll just summarize one or two paragraphs from the resolution. The first resolution, that's eight A, involves a collection and lien enforcement policy. And, uh, legal counsel has reviewed this policy and recommends some clarifying language. And the late change is proposed to increase from a flat fee of twenty to sixty dollars per month. So, uh, that's essentially what's involved in this document.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
So this has to do with this late fee and lien is, is regarding the assessments? Because what, you know, we have different late charges and late fees for different items, right?
Yeah.
So this is, this is specific to one item, and I believe, um, yeah, and it says...
Delinquent assessments.
Delinquent, and so I just thought it was important to clarify it. So this has to do with the fact that if somebody was late with their assessments for forty years or fifty years or whatever, they've been paying twenty dollars, and now we've changed it to this flat amount. I believe you're allowed to go up to ten or eleven percent. We just decided to leave it at that flat amount. And that only has to do with being late with your assessments. So I just wanted to clarify that because I forgot myself, so it's important.
And I, I approached this wrong, I think. Yeah, if I, if I could just read it, it says entertain a motion, and we should probably had a motion before we had you read that, Bert. So do I have a motion to...
I so move.
To approve this amendment? Okay. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Well, shouldn't he read it after we first did it and said...
He just read it.
He read, oh, we sort of do it.
We, we gotta reverse. This time we'll do it...
This was all done, this was all done at the previous meeting.
Right, right.
Motion was made and so on.
This is just to satisfy the thirty day notification.
That's right.
Because you couldn't sat, do it at the board meeting because the board meeting would have been twenty-eight days.
Right.
And you didn't want to wait till the next board meeting because that would have been...
Yes, and it was the major reason for calling the special meeting today.
Correct, okay.
Some of us were a little confused, but we got there.
And the voting screen is up. I just ran around and saw for everybody so everyone can use their screens to vote. Okay, so I have Director Zalon and Kane, and Director Kane that I need votes from. Sorry, I did first.
So...
Don't be.
I am.
Okay, the vote is in?
There you go.
Yes. Thank you. It looks like it passed yes, ten to nothing. I'll go to eight B, and I'll read this first, Bert, and then you can go ahead and, um, give a summation of it. Entertain a motion to approve manor alteration conditions. Initial thirty day notification requirement for members' comments and suggestions has been satisfied. Got a motion?
I so move.
Okay, second? Got a second? Thank you. All right, Bert, go ahead.
Voting screens should be...
This?
Oh, we haven't done them, sorry.
This deals with standard manor alteration conditions, and it sets up the requirement that we have a conformance deposit, a good faith deposit in those cases where alterations are being carried out. This is to ensure that legal dumping, excessive noise and smoking, parking in residential spaces, damage to mutual property during construction is, uh, not done by, uh, the construction companies.
What percentage is it? Is it a percentage of the alteration amount?
So, I so move, okay? So we're gonna vote?
All those, or do you want, anybody have their comments?
Any discussion?
I'm looking for how much this is. Is it a percentage of the alteration amount?
On the next, the next resolution covers what the fee is.
Oh, okay.
I think it's a little confusing. This resolution sets up the need for it and why we need it. And the next resolution talks about the, what the fee would be.
Any, any further comments? They will vote? All those in favor? Or just go ahead and vote. I have to... Ten yes. No, no, zero no's and no abstentions, all right? Eight C. Entertain a motion to approve manor alteration conformance deposit fee resolution. Initial thirty day notification requirement for member comments and suggestions has been satisfied. Entertaining a motion? I so move. Do we have a...
I'll second.
Second. Bert, would you go ahead and summarize that for us?
I'll read the, part of the resolution. Now therefore be resolved October twenty, twentieth, twenty seventeen. The fee will be required for all construction with a value of five hundred dollars or greater and will be refundable given that the contractor or resident performing the alterations conform to all mutual rules and standards. And, uh, the fee will be two hundred and fifty dollars is the conformance deposit fee. So that's a flat figure of two hundred and fifty dollars.
And that's refundable, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, do you have any comments? Steve? Yeah, what's the effective date of this?
October twentieth. That's today's date.
So I...
Any other comment?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, I have a question, and I hope someone can answer it. So if, in the, in the past, if, um, a contractor was found, it was found that he had thrown, I'm gonna, a toilet in the trash or something that cost us money, we used to have him go to a hearing, a compliance hearing, or we'd have the owner go to the compliance hearing and say, "Your contractor violated the rules, blah, 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 and it cost us this much to have the trash company come and make a special pickup." So now that we have the deposit, will you still have the hearing? So then all of the deposit does is, is make sure that you're not gonna try to collect and the person isn't gonna pay. So is the hearing still in place? Because supposedly, we cannot find somebody, we're not allowed to charge anybody unless we have a hearing. We really should ver, we should just verify that. I mean, because it makes, it makes sense. Brad, do you have an answer? I want to be sure that you're awake.
I am.
Okay. Because I want us to be, of course, within the law. We're not trying to collect extra money, blah, blah, blah.
Well, I don't think the fee would obviate your authority to, to find someone if they're in violation.
No, I'm not asking about it hav, having to do with a fine. What I'm basically saying is, is if we're, this fee obviously is there to pay for a rule viol, you know, it's doing something against the rules. So are we still required by law to have a hearing and then just say to the person, "And your penalty is coming from your fee"?
I don't believe we are because the, the fee is really to cover the costs of their non-compliance. And so if they, they comply, they get it back. If they don't, then we use that to cover our direct cost. If you wanted to provide punishment or deterrence above and beyond that, then that would require hearings and all that.
Okay, all right. Okay, so then the fee, so then therefore, it might, it might necess, I wasn't saying necessitate, we might have fewer hearings because to some, somebody, excuse me, breaks the rule, they have the deposit, they're charged for the violation, that's it. We're, you know, we let them know what happened, et cetera.
Potentially, I guess it would be, depend on the nature of, of the violation.
Right, okay, of course, so, all right. Well, we just have to make sure that, that's all coordinated with compliance, et cetera. So will we have a procedure on what we're doing, Brad?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Bill.
I saw Annette, and I think I saw John, and then I saw Jules. Okay, Annette, go ahead.
The way this works too is if they were still doing construction and they paid that fine, out of that, and the, this account got depleted, they would have to refresh this account with new monies.
Um, your time is...
Mm-hmm. Okay, you want to make that clear? Okay. Just a second. Uh, John, did you have some comment?
I replaced my front door. I had a choice of front doors anywhere from six hundred to, I think about fifteen hundred If I do a five thousand dollar project, the, the percentage of the construction cost will be a lot different than if it was a six hundred dollar project. I would suggest it would not be difficult to develop a sliding scale such that low, low-cost projects don't have to pay two hundred and fifty bucks.
Okay, yeah, John, we, we can discuss that at, at MNC or ASCS next time, and I think it'd be a good forum to discuss that in. Okay? I, we have a sliding, we have some sliding fees already based on the size of the project, so... Uh, Jules?
Can anyone believe that there is a charge against a contractor that would be less than, that would be less than two hundred and fifty dollars? It seems that it really is basically a coke, and it really doesn't get to the real problem. I don't care about it, but I just make that comment.
Susan, you, you started to speak before. Did you want to say something?
Um, yes, I did. I wanted to say, if we're going to say that we need to replenish whatever fee we determine, we need to put that in the language of the resolution.
You know, and, and we need to, you know, I don't have that, I don't have that resolution in front of me, uh, so, I mean, in the sense, I don't have the complete resolution, and I don't know if it deals with the things you're bringing up now. I'm sorry that they weren't, personally, I'm sorry they weren't brought up at a previous time rather than today, you know? I mean, it is, when it first came up. Go ahead, Annette.
Hi, um, yes, they were brought up in our architectural control meeting, and we discussed all this. We discussed a sliding scale. We also, what Suzie's, uh, to address what Suzie said, that is in the internal documents that the VMS staff deals with.
Right.
To give them. So all of this has been handled.
Right, so...
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other board members have a comment? If not, I'll, I'll...
Move on.
I'll bypass Brad and have Lori stood up to say something.
So we did, we did vet this in the architectural control. This is going to be kind of a pilot program. Originally, you'll remember that we talked about doing a percentage of what the value of the project was, and that being their sliding scale deposit.
Right.
When Kurt came on board, he suggested that we do a flat fee of two hundred and fifty dollars as a pilot program, give him about a year's study to see how much damage really occurs...
Right.
...to mutual property. So anything, any project over five hundred dollars, and that's when a contractor license kicks in, will require this two hundred and fifty dollar deposit, whether it be a standard alteration or a variance.
Thank you. Okay, Brad, did you want to add to that?
Well, I, I think in all that we do, we have to use some common sense occasionally, and there are probably, probably projects that are over five hundred dollars where there is almost a certainty that mutual property will not be damaged. And so we should identify those for you over the, the coming months and, and try to put some sensibility into this. We don't want to, want to torture people just because we can.
Okay, and, you know, if, once we get to, to item eight D on here, if you go to the back there, it does talk about our fee schedule, so, on this issue. Okay? Any other comments? Uh, Bert Moldau?
I think if we just went back to the staff report on this.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a line that basically says, "The committee discussed the potential of a sliding scale for projects above five hundred dollars. At this time, staff is recommending a flat fee of two hundred and fifty dollars for the conformance deposit as a pilot, allowing Tom to collect information and determine how much damage actually occurs to mutual property." I think that's...
That's right.
Important.
Okay.
I, I have another question.
Okay, I have a question, okay.
So, um, if somebody is doing, uh, somebody parks their truck illegally in the resident parking, in the visitor parking spaces, which they're not allowed to, and they do it constantly, or if somebody is working after hours, which they do all, a lot, is, so those are violations of, of perform, performance violations versus damage of property violations. So those would not come out of this amount? Is that correct?
The way it's written, they can.
They can?
The way the conditions of approval are written, which will stay in there, they can.
Okay, so do you have a list of what these so-called fines are?
It's any of the fines or...
No, but how much is it if you park your car illegally? How much is it if you are working on Saturday at seven o'clock at night and yelling at the residents? How much is it is if you're working on Sunday, you know? How much is it if you're working constantly without a permit? Because they've done stop, so do we have a list of those fines? Or is that something that is in the...
Well, compliance would recommend that.
That would still go to your executive committee, and should the people not pay their fine, we can take their fine out of the...
No, I didn't ask that. I didn't ask if they didn't pay their fine.
No, I, I think those kind of fines are, are not appropriate for that. I think the cost of us doing the work, for example, of security going out there and having to mess with these folks, of compliance having to send out letters... to mess with these folks, of compliance having to send out letters, all of that is part of the cost that could be reimbursed out of this fund. I mean, there's a lot of cases where security's called, we come out, you know, we tell somebody, "Hey, you can't do that," and then they stop doing it, and it's a pretty, pretty modest thing. There's other circumstances, which I'm sure you've all encountered, where they don't stop, and it becomes an ongoing management nightmare.
Right. So, so those are things that we're still, I mean, not that, I know that you're working with a very rough, long, neglected area, so those are just things that-
It's a framework, at this point.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Bill.
Yes, Bert?
The original intent of this ruling, okay, was to recover any damage that had been done. This has nothing to do-
Right.
...with parking or compliance issues such as working in the wrong hours. That is a separate issue that-
Okay.
...always go before the board.
Okay.
For compliance, right? So this is strictly to deal with damage.
Like, like sometimes they drip paint in the elevator, or they nick a hole in the wall, or, or a trash thing, or that guy. Okay, all right, so let's remember-
I, I don't disagree, but it deals with more than that, 'cause we're talking about final inspections and other things-
Right.
...that they don't comply with. And so, though, that will be a part of this as well. And they need to comply with our rules. If they don't, then this could come into play.
We have motion on the floor. We take a vote? Everyone's voted, we have, we have 10, 10 yes, zero nos, and no abstentions. All right?
One abstention.
We have an abstention?
Yes, it's not reporting.
How come we have 10, okay, we're revoting it?
9-0-1.
9-0-1?
Yes.
All right?
There you go.
All right. Now that I've lost my way with this, I'm going to try to get back on track here. I believe we're at number 8D, as in David, okay? Entertain a motion to approve an increase in manor alteration processing fees. Resolution, initial, resolution. Initial 30-day notification requirement for members' comments and suggestions has been satisfied. Mr. Baum, would you please read?
Okay, I'll just read the pertinent paragraph. What this does is it increases the fee for processing of variances. The fee currently is $10, and we are, there are two fees involved. It's the mutual consent request processing fee and the variance request processing fee. Now, therefore be it resolved, October 20th, 2017, that in order to come closer to partially offsetting administrative costs associated with processing variance requests, which is often followed by multiple resubmittals, and can be followed by an appeal to the board as mandated in accordance with Resolution 0313105, the Board of Directors of this corporation hereby sets the mutual consent request processing fee at $35 and the variance request processing fee at $150. And resolution, resolve that Resolution 031544, adopted April 2015, is here, 21, 2015, is hereby superseded and canceled. I so move.
Have any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll take a vote.
I think the only discussion that I would have is to say that these fees, you know, had, were set a long time ago, and it's about time that we really looked at the costs of these things, which we did, okay? And, and it's still not covering the total cost, but we're getting close.
I, I would make one other comment here, and that is, I think there's some confusion. These fees are not a shared cost, don't really come under the shared cost umbrella, because it require, this is a, a specific act that's the person who is, desires a variance has to go through, and this is not something that the whole community shares in. And that's why there's a difference between the fee structure and these other, like golf fees.
Rosemarie?
And another thing is, is that you're really, really working so diligently to add some sense of professionalism to this whole area, which has been fraught with pain, I think, you know? And, and the, the team is working not only on making sure that we're covering our expenses, because why should another member pay for the alteration of somebody else's unit? So I know that you're working on that, but you're also working diligently to make sure that the city isn't charging where they shouldn't, and so it's just a whole effort that takes time and effort to get this done correctly, and I know that you're working on it.
Thank, thank you. Do I have any more comments? Jules, you have a comment?
I had a question. Bert Muldown suggests that this has been a long time incubating, and that it's just to, you know, bring the costs up to something reasonable. But I thought I read that the last time the rates were set was in 2015. Am I mistaken?
No, you're correct.
So this has only been a two-year change?
But, look if I can hear that, okay? We never did really actually look at the cost. It was a, just a, we should charge something type of attitude. Yeah. And this time, we took a, a look-
Okay.
-and we found out, you know, that it is a lot more costly to deal with these issues. I mean, if you wanna step through the process, you'll see what I mean.
No, thank you for that explanation.
I just wanna, may I clarify that a little bit? If you look at the staff report for this, it says that the board adopted a variance processing fee to offset the cost. In September 2011, the board increased the processing fee to $100, and the, so that was in September 2011, and the manor alterations were less, were last revised in 1995. So it's been quite a while.
Wow, that is a long time.
You know, I, I have to, I don't know where they got that information, but I know, since I've been on the board since 2014, that was brought up, and we raised the fee to $100.
Okay.
So I know that for a fact.
It said in, in the, okay.
And I don't know how correct that is.
All right.
All right. Any other comments? If not, let's take a vote, pass, pass on the motion.
Director Muldown? Okay, were you a yea?
Nine yeses, no, no, zero nos, and no abstention? Sign yet, nine yeses?
Yes.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, oh, we're missing Susan.
Suzie left.
Susan, we were missing Susan. All right. Good. Let's move on to an item added to the agenda by Mr. Baum, item 8E, resident policy suspension.
I move that staff prepare a revised leasing policy in which the requirements for a financial credit check and criminal background check are eliminated, and they make any other changes that would make operations and application processes more efficient.
Bert, Bert, did you, oh, go ahead, if you have something to say, Rosemarie.
I believe that when we initially discussed this in closed session after the board meeting, we, we said that we did have the opportunity to have the lease be, be similar to the owner application, and that we did have the right to ask Lissy to sign a document that said, "I have not been accused of a crime." And that's not a criminal check. That was just a, a, I don't wanna use the word perfunctory, 'cause that lessens it. But it's just an affidavit, it's a statement. It doesn't cost the, the rent or anything, it doesn't cost the owner anything, but it is a statement that we asked for, even from a buyer. And we, we talked about that, that it was something that would be added, but it certainly wouldn't be problematic, but it shows our care and concern for the community. So can we add that to what you're asking for, or was I, I, like, dreaming?
No, you weren't dreaming it. What this basic, this motion asks is that staff look at the policy and bring, bring us a more efficient, effective one that, that certainly eliminates these background and, and financial requirements. And then we could add at that point a sign-off, as you suggested. And there are some other things we can do, which are mainly format changes that Pam has brought up, just to make it flow more easily. And we can simplify it so that the applicants can follow it more easily. But the major change would be in the credit check and the criminal background check.
Before we discuss this further, you made the motion. We didn't, we didn't take-
Oh, I should've seconded it. Instead, I asked a question, so I seconded and then asked a question.
Okay, now we can have, now we can have more discussion, if anybody has more comments that they wanna make. Steve? Yeah, I think we talked about this before, and one of the things I wanted to bring up was, or ask a question about, was the effective date.
The effect, that, we want them to bring it back for the next board meeting, okay? The next regular board meeting. And then we could have, because there's still not a 30-day gap, the next board meeting, I think, is in November 21st, and the meeting subsequently to that is in December, but it's not 30 days. So we could have a special meeting, just as we have now, just to ratify and vote on this proposal. So it would be done essentially in two months by the end of the year, and that is our goal.
And, oh, without raising my hand, I'll interject here. Are you, would you, are you in, thinking that you want, in the interim, any action by the, by the, by the folks?
Yes, as part of this, and we've already talked about this, well, we would essentially give everyone a 60-day extension, anyone who makes an application, so they are not required to, at this point, do the criminal and financial checks. So that will be in abeyance for 60 days, and by that time, this new, we haven't really voted on, we're just voting on, looking at it, this new policy will then be in effect.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Okay, John, Brad, you looking like you wanted to say something? Or just, we'll go with John, go ahead.
I wanna say that I agree strongly with what Rosemarie said. It's very important that we address these issues with respect to all new residents on the first time.
Okay. Brad, did you have something you wanted to comment?
Well, I just, you, you probably saw my communication to staff yesterday, where I, I directed them to cease requiring those two documents as part of the, the lease application process, as a result of our prior discussions. Are you comfortable with that approach?
Yes, this was, I think Pam, we've talked about with Pam, this was discussed and voted upon at our closed meeting, so it did not just come out of the thin air. I think that's important to understand. So this, now, this suspension essentially is just a stop, stopgap procedure so that our residents can relax about this issue. And the reason we, we've done this is not because we thought the requirements that we had were bad or particularly onerous. We did it just to make sure that everything now is running more smoothly and that we can concentrate on doing other issues. It's still the responsibility of the landlord or the person who's leasing his manor to make sure that the people he's bringing into the community are qualified and will not cause any kind of abuses and disturbance, because in the last, in the last analysis, it is the owner and of the manor, the landlord, who is responsible for the behavior of his tenants. So it's actually in his benefit, to his benefit, to go through these types of procedures before he rents, he or she rents out the manor.
Yeah. And Brad, you had one other comment?
Yeah, I just wanna follow up on Bert. I think it's a great point, and maybe not everyone who leases out their manor is aware, but we've had, we've had members who are also landlords get fines that are thousands and thousands of dollars because of the, the acts of their, of their tenants. And I, you know, I, it would be horrible, you know, if you leased out your manor, you didn't do a good check, and you end up getting $10,000 worth of fine from, from the association. That would be, be really quite a blow. So I, I think people need to, need to do the work. If we're not gonna do it, then they should take responsibility and, and do that work to protect themselves and the community.
Rosemarie?
I think a really important thing here is that, and, and I know that Bert is saying it, and he's gonna keep saying it, is, is we did something that we really believed was in the best interest of the community, the financial concerns and the criminal checks, because of some of the really challenging things that go on in our compliance hearings. But we heard, we listened to the residents. A lot of you came and spoke to us, a lot of you did. And so it's our responsibility to, to listen to what you have to say. It's our responsibility then to sit down as the board and say, "Okay, this makes sense, this makes sense. If we don't do this, what could possibly happen there?" We also re-reviewed it with legal. Now, remember, we've had a change in our legal advice, so it might've been our former attorney that gave us the other advice. We talked to Brad, so we're making this change, and when we sit down and review it all, probably it'll just be tighter in the beginning of the year. We know that not everybody watches our television, televised board meeting. I know that Bert is going to review it on this day, but we're also going to ask staff to do a press release to the papers, to the Register, that says something like, "We heard you, and we're doing this, this, this," and I know that Bert could put it together, so that we're trying to do whatever we can to let the community know that we heard what you had to say, we re-reviewed it, and this is where we are. Correct?
Correct, absolutely. I only, I have only one comment. I'll ask anybody that knows. I understand if you're trying to rent something, if you're just out in the world outside of Laguna Woods, aren't there vetting services that will vet a potential leasing?
Yes, absolutely.
And if something that we might wanna rec, if that's so, we might wanna recommend it.
We gave these landlords a list of websites they could go to, to do, go through this process, and I think one of the, Francis Wrangell actually went through it, and it takes about five minutes. You get an instant answer, and the cost is less than, it's about 20 bucks. So it's not a, a difficult procedure to go through, but people felt uncomfortable with it. When we did talk to our lawyer about it, and she said, "These requests are reasonable," but a lot of people felt we were interfering with their rights, their constitutional rights, and their privacy. So we, we looked at it again and decided that this was a better way for the whole community to go forward at this point.
Thank you, Bert. Any other commentary? Yes, Penny?
Just, I wanted to add to what Rosemarie said about the community- Just I wanted to add to what Rosemarie said about the communication. I was just wondering how soon a blast is going to actually go out to the community. Globe is not till next week, you know?
I'm going on TV6 Monday.
Right.
And we're having a communication meeting Monday afternoon, and we will discuss it at that meeting. So we'll try to do this as effectively, as quickly, and efficiently as we can.
I know you will, Bert.
Annette?
And for those people leasing out in the community that haven't done it in a while, I believe it's California Apartment Association that has leases and updates, and for a member fee, you can, they can walk you through a lot of things that are in your best interests and that are applicable to all today's laws.
Okay. And maybe I'll just make a comment on this too, is that we have dealt, at least my term on the board, we have dealt with so many situations, it is taking time and money for people who have leased in here that have become problems. And what we're really, it seems to me, what we're really saying is we're putting this responsibility back on the owners. And it is incumbent on the owners to make sure that they do due diligence, because ultimately it comes back to us, because we have the fiduciary responsibility to the entire HOA and all of its members, to make sure that we do not suffer financial issues and that we do not have legal issues because of that. I guess that's all I had to say. Anything else? If not, take a vote. Yeah, that's correct. Nine yeses, no no's, and no abstentions. All right. Thank you. Right? We'll go to Mr. Muldown's item on here, number 8F. He wants to talk about solar costs going up, and the floor is here. Do I have a motion from you, Bert?
No, it's not a motion.
You want a motion? You just want an item for discussion?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, it's informative. On September 22, U.S. trade officials empowered President Trump to impose tariffs on solar energy. And I think it's important to note that we did not yet do Gate 14. It has been deferred, probably out to 2019, since it's not on this budget. But I did on my own, went out and basically asked for information as to what it would take to do this gate, and came back that we would need about 280,000 kilowatt-hours capacity. Comparing that to what we had already spent, what we're looking at potentially would be an expenditure of around $460,000 if we wait. And this tariff does indeed go in effect, and I believe that President Trump had made it very clear that he is very much willing to raise tariffs on foreign products that undercut American-produced products. And really, there are only two manufacturers of American products in the U.S., that we would face in 2019 an additional cost for installation of solar of about $100,000. So I think this board should be aware of this recent event and probably consider it in the future. That's it.
Thank you, Bert.
Question?
Sure thing, John.
You said you did an analysis, Bert. What's the ROI?
Well, we don't want to, I don't think we need to discuss that right now. John, we can discuss this in...
No different than what it was in the past.
We can come in the Energy Committee.
Which basically enable us to go ahead and do it.
Okay. Okay. We're down to item 9, Director's Comments. Bunny, any comments? John, any comments? Bert? Steve? Rosemarie? Bert? Jules? Oh, no, there's always one in the crowd. My goodness. Go ahead, Annette.
I just really wanted to thank all the directors today, because I think we really heard the people about the lease issue, and we're really trying not to penalize the majority that do it right, for the few that get it wrong, and the few that get it wrong now will just be much more responsible for their actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Annette. If that is all, I am going to call this meeting to an end. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.